What you said in your word, whether it's united, that is strength. And God, we can see that our city is receiving strength, God. And we ask that you would look on the mayor of this city, the president of the council, all of the city councils and all of the leaders, God, that represent this city. And God, we know, God, there's a wall that has to be built. And sometime, God, in building a wall, we sometime don't understand the tools that we're working with. But God, we know this morning, God, the wall will be built. Because you have allowed us to see the direction, the vision, the purpose and the direction you want us to go. And God, we pray for the police department, our leaders that's leading us out there, God, to represent our city, to keep crime down, to help us understand that the problem that we're dealing with is bigger than us, is bigger than City Hall, is bigger than the police department. We pray for the parents of the children, God, that don't understand the family structure. And ask this day, God, we believe, God, in your word, God, that you said, "If my peoples, which are called by my name, were armor themselves and seek my face and turn," God, you said, "I will heal." We believe healing is coming back, God. We believe restoration is coming back. We believe the grass are going to get green again, that our peoples are going to flow. And we believe, God, that unity is going to scribe and that there's a thrust and there's a drive, that you are doing something great. I hear you saying in your word, God, that indebted to keep the unity of the spirit and the bonds of peace. God, allow your peace, God, to operate in the land, in the 99 neighborhoods. Allow your neighborhood presidents to see the vision, to see the purpose. And God, in my closing, you said in your word, God, write the vision. Lord, this morning, the president of the council, the city council, the mayor, the police chief, they have the pen in their hand and they're writing the vision. They believe that destiny, they believe that there's a purpose. They believe that one day, Birmingham will be great like it's supposed to be all over the world. And people will recognize this great city in the direction that we're going. And we pray, God, for leadership. In Jesus' name, we pray. Let us all say, amen.
Amen. Leading the flag, our flag of allegiance is to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just as all.
Amen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Woods. Council President, President Protem Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Good morning. And Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, council, the minutes are not ready for the April 1st, 2025 through August 19th, 2025 meetings. At this time, we'll have communications from the mayor's office.
Sir, good morning, Mr. President, Madam Protem, members of the council, members of the public, all those under the sound of my voice. There's no mayor's reports today. Everybody have a great day.
All right. We'll read the statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Madam Clerk, could we please read through the consent agenda items?
Yes, sir. The consent agenda begins on page two with items one and two. On page four, we have items three, four, and five. On page five, we have items six, seven, and eight. On page six, we have items nine and 10. On page seven, we have item 11. On page eight, we have item 12. Page nine, item 13. Page 10, item 14. Page 12, item 15. Page 14, items 16 and 17. Page 18, item 18. Page 19, items 19 and 20. Page 20, item 21. Page 23, item 22. Page 24, item 23.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, we need to reestablish our call room.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Counselor Tate has joined us, so please continue.
Okay. On page 24, we have item 23. Page 26, we have item 24. Page 27, we have item 25. Page 28, item 26. Page 34, we have item 27. Page 35, item 28. Page 37, we have items 29, 30, 31. Page 38, items 32, 33, 34, 35. Page 39, items 36, 37, and 38. Page 40, items 40, 41, and 42. Page 41, we have items 43, 44, and 45. And please note on item 43 that the item was recommended by the chair of the Budget and Finance Committee. Page 42, we have items 46, 47, and 48. On page 43, we have items 49, 50, 51. On page 44, we have items 52, 53, 54, and 55. And that concludes the consent agenda, and you also have an addendum item.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any members of the council that wish to remove any of the consent agenda items? All right, seeing none, we also have items one through 38 that are public hearing items. Are there any members of the public that wish to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? Yes, ma'am. Please come to the lectern. Tell us which item you're interested in.
Item 13.
Item 13. Give us a second to find it.
Eighty-seven. Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven.
Yes. Excuse me? Yes.
Yeah, that's 4429 Forty-Fifth Avenue North.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So we're going to...
Mr. President.
Yes.
Will we draw that item, that parcel sold staff and entertain and investigate?
Okay, so we'll just strike that item from the, that group.
Okay.
And, but the other items will stay there and the item can remain on consent. So we're just taking that one out of the group.
Okay.
I have a question, ma'am. I'm curious what's going on. I'd like to know what's actually going on.
What do you mean what's going on?
Like, why do you want, why do you want it removed, other than, I assume you're the owner?
Well, there's a, I guess the cost is for resolution of abatement of weeds and grass and whatever. I've already done that. I don't think anybody has been about to check that, so is, is that what you mean?
Yes, ma'am. I was curious. So the city did cut that, is that correct?
Incorrect.
That's incorrect. Okay.
What, what did you say?
I was just curi-, I was just, yeah.
Someone from our code enforcement staff would get in touch with you.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mitchell, is there any way you could just let me know what the outcome is of that? Because I want to see where we're going with weed abatement, especially since we have something else on the agenda for weed abatement.
One other thing, there's an alley behind the property that the city is not upkeeping, upkeeping.
Ma'am, ma'am, this is... It doesn't sound like you've kept your property up either.
Uh, true, but I'm not the city.
Excuse me.
You're not.
Excuse me. Or...
Have a good day.
This is not the appropriate time to discuss this, as we're considering the consent agenda.
Okay.
That item has been removed.
Okay.
And so it will not be considered.
All right.
And item 13 will remain on consent with the, with the other items. Got it? Counselor Abbott.
On an entirely different topic, I just wanted to ask a question about item 40 that's on page 40.
Go ahead, ask your question.
Okay, my original question was whose discretionary funds are these? But then I understand it's not discretionary funds, so I wanted to hear an explanation of what this is and where it's coming from and why.
Mr. President, that's our item. So first, the item is bypassing Budget and Finance because Budget and Finance was canceled yesterday. But in the sense of urgency of working with AG Gaston, there were four counselors who were considered, Alexander, Clark, Moore, and Tate. I want to say that one or more of those counselors had not confirmed their contribution, but we have a total amount of up to 15,000. We are using the departmental account to move the item, but the funding for each respective council will be taken from their account and transferred back into departmental account.
Okay, and the reason we're not just waiting for the council members to get their allocations made is AG Gaston's financial state or what?
I can't speak to the response or the lack of from each counselor, but what I can say is for the counselors who want to support AG Gaston, the item is moving. So if there is some consideration for the item to be tabled, that's in the purgative of the council. But we attempted to move it from the standpoint of supporting the intent of providing funding for AG Gaston.
Okay, well, that sounds very weird. And I don't understand it, but I don't want to hold up money for AG Gaston Boys and Girls Club because I'm sure they need it.
So that item can remain on consent?
Yeah, it can, but it's, it's a peculiar way of doing business.
Okay.
For the city council. Seems odd.
Are there any other items that need, need to be removed?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
We have one on page 20, item 21. Well, actually, the parcel number is on page 21. And that will be parcel 154.
154.
I'm sorry, 156.
156, 7306 Second Avenue South.
Yes, sir. We will draw that from that item.
All right.
It's the same reason. Staff members outside to discuss the item with that. And if it comes back, it'll be back on the council agenda next week.
Okay, so 156 under item 21 on page 21 has been removed. And, but item 21 will otherwise remain on the consent agenda. Okay. Can we, we're ready for a motion on the consent agenda?
Yes, we, councilors, there's one more correction on page 41, item 45. Please disregard 1980, that should be removed. So it'll just say the city of, the general code of the city of Birmingham as amended, but just disregard the date of the year, the 1980 year. That should be removed off the ballot.
It's a correction on item 45, page 41, to remove the 1980 date. Just strike 1980 out.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Williams.
I want to take off item 41.
Item 41, that is page 40, removed from the consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
If we stay here long enough, who knows what will happen. Item 44 on page 41, I don't necessarily want it to be off the agenda. I just want to say thank you to the administration for that because the residents in the neighborhood are, have been very concerned about that apartment complex, the mountainside one. And to not have bullets flying in the neighborhood would be very nice. So thank, thank you to the Office of the City Attorney. That's all.
All right. We're ready for a motion on the consent agenda. All right.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The consent agenda has been approved. Our first item is item 39.
Yes, sir. Item 39 is on page 39. All right, item 39 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of $9,438.07 to execute a quitclaim deed to Rapid Holdings LLC for the sale of property legally described as lot 9 block 9 according to the survey of J.R. Phillips as recorded in map book 5, page 7, in the probate office of Jefferson County, Alabama, PID 2300283012005.000, city account 5471, and located at 92047th Way, South Birmingham, Alabama, 35222, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of municipal, excuse me, improvement liens in accordance with section 3-1-4C of the general code of the city of Birmingham. This is an item of permanent operation, so we need you see first.
So, Mr. President.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Council President Protem Alexander.
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn.
Aye.
Okay, now we need a motion.
Second.
Yeah, okay, it's a motion second and any discussion on this item. We're ready for the vote.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, item 39 is approved. Our next item is item 41.
Item 41 on page 40, excuse me. It's a resolution approving an author-, I'm sorry, reading the wrong one. Approve, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the city of Birmingham an agreement with Birmingham Regional Paratransit Consortium, ClassTran, under which ClassTran shall provide public transportation for the elderly and disabled citizens residing in Birmingham for a sum not to exceed $300,000 for a term of two years, subject to an appropriation in the city corresponding fiscal year's budget.
All right, it's been moved in second, and Counselor Williams?
Yeah, so I have a lot of questions about this. One is, what is the actual amount that we are spending here?
$300,000.
But the contract says 250,000.
So that is probably an older mistake from last year. We did increase their funding by $50,000.
Okay. Why are we increasing their, I mean, the, I mean, it's, it's like six times in this contract that's in our pack. Maybe I have a, surely they didn't put the contract from last year in here.
Yeah, we can get that corrected, Counselor, but to your question, the request came from ClassTran for an increase due to the cost of doing business. We do have their leadership here that can explain why they asked for the increase.
Yeah, I'd love to speak as to why.
Yes, ma'am. You guys from ClassTran, if you could, please come forward.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
My name is Tiffany Taylor, finance manager with ClassTran. We also have President Owen Thomas, our innovation manager with ClassTran as well. So basically, as you are correct, we have received the new contract. Just waiting for approval and then signature. We did make a request due to the increase throughout the city of Birmingham from 250,000 to 300,000 dollars.
And why is that?
I'm sorry?
Why is that?
That's due to the cost of increase in living, our gas, our transportation. We also have situations to where we have to, we've received an increase in our insurance. We've received an increase in gassing the vehicles just across the board.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
As, as a general note, fuel prices, of course, are down this year. So what, how do we know what, what we're voting on if the contract's last year's contract?
Well, we've also presented the new report. We were asked to actually report monthly, and we've already done that. I'm not sure if you guys received a copy of it, but we have submitted a report.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Just a note, as you mentioned, one thing that's significantly different with this contract from previous contracts, others than the dollar amount, is that we've included the same provisions that we require of BJCTA in terms of monthly reports from ClassTran that wasn't in the, in the contract previously. So expect to receive those reports on a monthly basis as, as we do from BJCTA. So.
And my guess is, is it still correct that if you're in within a certain amount of a bus stop, then BJCTA is responsible for picking you up? And if you're outside of that, then ClassTran is responsible for picking you up?
Right, and it has to do with the federal funding. So there's different funding mechanisms from the federal department or Federal Transit Authority. And so BJCTA's VIP service operates within three-quarter mile of a fixed route. And ClassTran covers everything else in, in the county. So it's part, when this came through the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, we had a lot of discussion about collaboration between ClassTran and BJCTA. And some of that discussion has already started. You know, we want to see these types of taxpayer dollars be used as efficiently as possible. So, you know, as you imagine, with the, that type of setup, having two organizations working in close proximity, there's, you know, some degree of overlap. So, you know, we strongly encouraged both BJCTA and ClassTran to, to be in close conversation with each other so that, you know, that their, the redundancy can be reduced.
Okay, and that's just starting the talking to each other?
The, I believe they've been in conversation previously. You know, we're just strongly encouraging that to continue.
Okay.
Yes, we have been speaking directly. Our executive directors have been meeting directly with each other, and we are still working on a way and a solution to get together and make sure that the city of Birmingham, the transportation for our paratransit services are met on demand. So I know that our executive directors did meet on last week together. So we are constantly, you know, in touch with them. Again, we are providing referrals back and forth to make sure that if it's something that our BJCTA cannot cover, ClassTran will then come in and assist the clients and the citizens of Birmingham.
Okay.
I, I can give you more history later, but...
I mean, it's just this broken transportation system is wearing me out, but all right. Thank you.
There's, there's some federal issues that have led to this kind of two, two organization system. But, you know, I'll explain that to you soon.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm still getting all these emails about not, you know, folks not getting picked up. And they're emails from caregivers or the equivalent thereof.
Sure.
About folks not getting picked up in my district. And they said, well, we'll take you there, but we won't take you back. So, you know, this, so, you know, I guess my point is this. From, from my constituents' perspective, the coordination does not seem to be there because I, as their council member, am getting email, and you know, I don't have anything to do with how they get to the grocery store and back. But I, as their council member, am getting emails that they've been told that we'll take you there, but we won't take you back home. And so what do I say to this lady? You know, I mean, golly, how pitiful. So anyway, that's, I'm just, this whole thing is frustrating, but we can go ahead and vote.
Yeah. As Counselor Smithman.
So I guess, logistically, how can we improve that then? What's the, what's the plan for that?
If you don't mind, as our innovation manager, he worked strongly with our scheduling team.
Okay.
So we...
I'm sorry, what, what's your name and title?
My name is Owen Thomas. I'm the innovation manager with ClassTran. I've been there about nine years. We don't tell people that we can't... Um, we don't tell people that we can't take them back, I was wondering if that was coming from Class Trans riders specifically. Um, but because we'd love to reach out to them. Um, if, if we take somebody, you know, to an appointment, we definitely make sure that they get home. We are doing a lot to improve services. One of the things that we do in coordination with BJCTA is we use their service area map within our software to make sure that we're not duplicating services. So if we put a trip request in, and both the origin and destination, both ends of that trip are within Max's service area, we refer that trip to BJCTA. Uh, we only perform the trips that have at least one end outside of BJCTA's service area. Thereby, we're bringing people from more rural parts of the county into Birmingham for medical, nutrition, dialysis.
And explain to us, um, you know, who you're serving and how they arrange, uh, transportation.
Sure, so we serve, um, in the urbanized areas, people who are sixty years of age and older, and people with disabilities. And then in the rural areas of Jefferson and Shelby County, anyone can ride regardless of age and disability. Um, there's a very simple application process, they can sign up on our website. Uh, once they're approved, they can schedule trips with us over the phone up to fourteen days in advance.
All right, thank you, I appreciate the information, we're ready for the vote.
Thank you.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right.
Excuse me, is your I for?
Opposed.
All right, so item forty-one is approved.
And the next item is fifty-six.
Fifty-six, yeah.
On page forty-four. A resolution setting a public hearing September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC twenty-two-five dash zero-zero-zero-eighteen, to change zone district boundaries from C-O-N-I contingency office and institutional district and QB-three qualified community business district to C-one neighborhood commercial district, filed by Drennan Memorial Trust owner and St. Mary's on the Highlands applicant for property located at twelve-nineteen, Nineteenth Street, South Birmingham, situated in the one-fourth section six, township eighteen, South Range Two West. That's three-five-two-zero-five.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, we're ready for the vote.
All right, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, item fifty-six is approved. Um, do we have any council members that need to make announcements?
Oh, we have the addendum, item number fifty-seven.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, uh, item fifty-seven, uh, the addendum item, read them, please.
All right, item number fifty-seven. Is an ordinance, ordinance extending ordinance number twenty-five dash ninety-eight, declaring a local emergency effective July eighth, twenty-twenty-five due to the hazardous vegetative overgrowth throughout the city of Birmingham caused by excessive rainfall. Uh, and it's hereby extended for an additional forty-five days through October tenth, twenty-twenty-five, unless sooner terminated by the council. Uh, this is an item of permanent operation, so we need you see. Councilmember Abbott? Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Council President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
And President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Motion on the item?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known.
Wait, I have a question.
That's what I was waiting.
Sure.
Have we determined, I don't want to say a rubric, but how are we determining the overgrown lots that we're cutting?
Attorney Wright, do you, uh, can you answer that question, or Chief Mitchell, or Chief?
Yeah, we, we can tag team on it, so some of it is just the emergency declarations that are done by DPW and code enforcement. Um, so they do provide us with those updates on, these are the ones that are the most urgent. And then the updates that we get from you all or community, we have them investigated and then they're declared.
Okay, do you think we can get that list? Because that would be kind of helpful, you know, we can tell our residents where the overgrown lots are, what qualifies this on the list. Because I know I have a, I think every district has overgrown lots, so I just want to be able to, you know, provide them that information.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Counselor Abbott?
I had one question also. So we've hired some outside contractors to do this work. So does that mean that our regular public works crews are continuing to clear alleys that are growing closed? And, and open alleys, paved alleys that are growing closed? Are, are people are going to continue to do their normal work and the contractors are doing this extra work?
Right, so they were continuing to do it anyway, but because they were pulled to have to do some of these, they were dividing and conquering. So this allows them to handle right-ofways, handle, um, additional park service, but that's what the contractors are doing, the private lot. So yes, this helps our team to be able to go back through alleys and right-ofways.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, we're ready. Uh, sorry, Counsel Williams?
So I have a fundamental issue with this, since we are not charging the folks for this service. Um, you know, we just had two, my question, you know, my question wasn't to be a pain, but I wanted to know why these folks wanted their property off the list. But the people on this will never have to come up here because we're not charging them back for this. And so, you know, one, there's an inequity there. But two, you know, how much money are we going to spend on this? Because the taxpayers are footing this bill instead of us giving it back to the people that are the slum lords? And, um, is there a dollar amount that we're authorizing when we vote this up? Or is this in, what, how's this work?
Mr. President?
Chief Mitchell?
Yeah, I can kind of hit both of those points. So the dollar amount was done when we approved the budget for around three-point-five million dollars for we debatement. So we'll tap into that fund for all the, um, the funding for that. To your first point was basically asking about, are we charging those deliquement property owners that are on private? Yes, there are none on this agenda, but prior past items that have been on the agenda had a special code that said emergency on those. So we are tagging them and we are going to put liens against the property owners.
Okay, I've corrected that. Because when we first passed this, we were told that because there was a due process with timing that we were not going to charge back, but we are charging them back.
Chief Mitchell, is it safe to assume that most of these property already have, uh, we debatement liens on them?
That would be safe to say, yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, all right, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, item fifty-seven is approved. Um, announcements, anybody got any pressing announcements they need to make? I do have one, and that is to announce vacancies on the Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority Board. Uh, we're taking, uh, applications for people who are interested in that. If you're, you are interested, please email your resume and letter of interest to KimberlyPhillips@kimberly.phillips@birminghamal.gov by Wednesday, September third, at five P.M. If you have any questions, please call, contact my office at two oh five two-five-four two-six-seven-nine. Any other pressing announcements? Counselor Abbott?
Yes, I wanted to announce that, uh, this coming Monday, September first, the Glen Iris Neighborhood Meeting is canceled due to the Labor Day holiday. And I wanted to wish everyone, all my colleagues, good luck on their elections. And bless you, I know how much fun it is, I remember. So that, that was all, thank you.
We have no public speakers who have signed up this morning. I do want to thank Officer Square for being with us again this morning, appreciate you. Um, and now we are.
Mr. President?
Yes.
One other thing, I didn't look to the top of my announcements. Um, the next planning and zoning commi, uh, committee meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow, um, August twenty-seventh at three-thirty is canceled. So those of you who are on that committee can get a good day's sleep.
Okay, got it.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
All right.
All opposed?
Meeting adjourned, thank you.
So today we're out here at Englewood K two eight. Uh, we got two oh five ICE, uh, for all of our young scholars uh, because Englewood K two eight was a school that had the most participation on the first day of school. They had over two-hundred-and-sixty-seven students that participated on the first day, which makes up eighty-seven percent of their total enrollment. So definitely wanted to give them a huge, huge shout-out and celebrate them uh, because we need to make sure that all of our students are coming to school, um, especially on those first days. So, uh, shout-out to all the scholars here at Englewood K two eight. Uh, they're having a great time, they've had an opportunity to get all kinds of different flavors. Uh, they're walking back in the school with different colored lips, like, it's a beautiful thing. I wanted to give a big shout-out to, uh, the school board member, Derek Phillips, who also partnered with me in this endeavor. Wanted to give a huge shout-out to, uh, Principal Dr. Steve Brown, who is the leader of this school, who's doing an excellent, excellent job here. Um, and all the faculty and staff and the parents, uh, because it took everybody to make this possible. Um, not even just the shaved ice, but making sure that our students are coming to school and they're actively learning, uh, and, you know, here to learn. And, yeah, I'm rambling, it's hot outside, y'all, it's blazing. So I'm about to go and get me some shaved ice, and we're about to go.